But anyway, it's uh. We're not taking anything for granted. I mean, right now, according to what we know, they're applying for the horizontal on site down above Saginaw Bay in the lower part of the Escoto-Luismith Airport. And as far as we know, they haven't started their application process with the FAA for this. But they can't, they can't go ahead with this unless it's rezoned.
Don't they have to?
And the county officials will have to agree with them. So we're hopeful.
And they haven't even put anything on the agenda to have it rezoned?
Darlene Turner found out about this whole thing when she read it in the newspaper. The county kept a secret for a year, didn't even inform county officials, nobody. I mean, that's the kind of bullshit that they, 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 it's all the same.
Sounds like Chicago politics.
Hey, I tell you, I've lived in Chicago and I've lived in a lot of small towns. And corruption and bullshit is everywhere.
I think the fact that-
Not in Marquette Township.
No, no, not here.
Not in Marquette Township.
Not here.
Well, that's what you're saying here.
It's a place to live right here.
Yeah, I think he's starting to see that this is-
Yeah, I mean, all he saw was dollar signs and just, you know.
Well, I mean, one of these, one of these launch sites in Kodiak, Alaska, that launches a small class of rocket, launches a rocket made by a company in California called Astro. And that has blown up, up there a couple of times, including one time they had to remove 230 metric tons of the environment around the soil because of pollution. But when they launch, they fly five people from California to launch, and then they fly them back. And then all this left there is janitors and custodians. It's just, it's a real boom job. Anyway, I'm stepping down.
You know that, we were talking to what's-his-name, Elon, both are two?
Uh, it's-
You saw that in the article, I'm sure.
I saw that in the article, but it was, you know, it comes from, gotta consider the source.
Yeah.
Anyway, good job, Danny. Proud of you.
Thanks.
That replaces your front sheet.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if you saw that other email.
And then he said Linda wasn't here. Gotcha. Just slow to the game tonight.
Okay, so we're on Cherry Street and not on Conover 550.
Right. Oh, jeez, sorry. You're related this so late. All right, let's call this meeting to order for Marquette Township Planning Commission of April 27th, 2022. And we'll do the roll call.
Steve Haken and Lake Enchantment. Guys Ferraro Eagles Ness Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Eric Powers, Staff Pointer.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Minister.
And Linda Winslow is excused tonight.
Correct.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Can I make a motion, Doug?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Minutes from the previous meeting of April 13th, 2022.
Move to approve the minutes from the previous meeting of April 13th? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay. Let's move on to public comment. Anyone wishing to comment now, before we get into the agenda items, is welcome to do so. Or if you want to wait till your agenda item comes up, you can do that too. Okay. All right, new business. Six A, special use permit public hearing request for proposed short-term rental unit on a property located at 2282 Cherry Street in Marquette, within the urban residential zoning district. The applicant is?
Damia.
Damia Twiris? Uh, 2282 Cherry Street in Marquette. Jason?
I'll be taking this one. So yep, staff has received a complete application for a special use permit application for a short-term rental use at 2282 Cherry Street, located in the urban residential zoning district. The application did include narrative, as you can see in your packet, the parcel report, as well as a survey provided by the applicant. Fees have been paid, and if the commission is amenable, staff would recommend to schedule a public hearing for, I'm sure I get this right, May 25th at 7:00 PM. And the applicant is here to answer any questions, and I am as well, so.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions, comments?
We receive any, or is-
This is just a request, no?
Just, just a schedule.
Then the letters are sent out.
Yep.
Yeah, have you been notified that this will change your tax status in your home?
No.
So, that was one of the things we're gonna bring up tonight. So if you rent your house for more than 14 days a year, you will lose your primary residence exempt exemption.
Okay.
Which is called your P R E. One of the questions, I guess, I wanted to ask you too, is are you renting your entire home, or would it just be a room inside of your home?
It would be the upstairs. Yeah, it would be the whole house.
Okay.
I would not be there. It would be there.
Okay. So yeah, so that's where that comes in, and yeah, normally upon your initial discussion, we would have disclosed that to you. But that is a consideration, so if you'd like to crunch those numbers, you're welcome to give.
Can you, what is it, can you tell me what would happen?
Yeah, so if you live in your home and you own your home, you get a homestead exemption.
Yeah.
And that's what that is essentially. So if you rent it out for more than 14 days, the state of Michigan says that you would lose your, that exemption.
Well, I've already talked to my accountant, and we've already, is that who I would deal with that through?
Or if you wanted to crunch the numbers, our assessor would be the one that should be.
Yeah, I think that would be fun, because I've already talked to her and told her this is what I'm planning on doing.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Do you know what?
You're applying to do.
I, yeah, I'm hoping to be able to do.
You may want to talk to Dulce.
Okay.
Typically, the financial benefit of the short-term rental far outweighs the exemption.
That's, yeah.
Loss, and so, yeah.
Can I ask you, Jason, how would you go about getting your exemption back?
That's a good question. Once the use is established on a property, it travels with the property. So unless you came into the township and said, you know what, I don't want to do it anymore, I'd like to get that back, then at the point where we would issue an annual business license, we would not issue that license, and then we close out the use on the property. And then I'm sure a short conversation with the assessor could get that done.
Okay. London is not too onerous.
You'd probably have to wait till the next year to, you know, run through that year of tax.
Right, right.
But yeah, as long as you know there aren't any, we don't want you to have any surprises coming up, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Is there a legal description of the parcel?
Yeah. It's referred to as Tovage Park, Sub Number 6 Lot 55519.
It's in the, it's in the parcel report.
The entire, the entire lot? It's not half lot or anything like that?
That's correct.
Okay.
There's also a full-blown survey that demonstrates that.
Ask you a question, Damia. When, when you decide to do this, do you go through a, is there a service that you use that like helped you find short-term renters?
Yeah, it would be the Airbnb.
Oh, you do it through Airbnb? Okay.
Yeah, and that's what's so great about that too, is you get, I mean, everybody wants great ratings. You want great ratings as a renter and a rentee, so that's what makes it work well for both parties. Because you get the right thing.
So this will be scheduled in, for two weeks? Do we have enough, do we have to wait longer than that?
About one month on May 25th.
Okay, because of the, you know, it's all that.
Yep.
Any other questions? Any motions?
Sure, I'll make a motion that the, we schedule a public hearing for the special use permit requested by, for this parcel on May 25th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? opposed? Okay, it'll be scheduled on the 25th then. Thanks for coming.
Can I go? My kids are home. I'm sleeping alone, I gotta, that's dangerous. Thank you, thank you for coming.
Aye.
Okay. Six B, short-term rental report discussion.
So I, oh, as discussed at the last meeting, that's kind of short-term rental report, an overview of some of those issues that were brought to staff, as well as, again, just the general overview of this kind of safety and compliance issues. I'll kind of go over the highlights here, but I would encourage you to review it in your own time and take some serious considerations on some of these things, because staff has been considering them, I would say, pretty diligently as well. So the township board adopted the short-term rental ordinance language in 2018, in June of 2018. As shown on that first page there of that report, that's the entirety of the language, between the definition in Article 2, and then the relatively short language in Article 16 regarding those short-term rentals. To date, the planning commission has received 16 special use permit applications regarding short-term rentals and have approved 13 of them. The last two have been denied this year, and then the first one that was denied, let's see, that spreadsheet that was also shared at the last meeting is included in your packet. That first one denied was in 2019. And this spreadsheet has been expanded and evolved a little bit just this week, so I will maybe distribute that most updated version to you guys after the meeting. So there, there was questions last time about the, the status of the, the state legislation. So there's a section in here regarding that. Both House Bill 4722 and Senate Bill 446 address this, this, this issue. Both of those sit in the Committee for Regulatory Reform in the Senate, with no apparent progress. The Senate bill has had no progress since May of last year, and the House bill has had no progress since October of last year. These bills would amend the zoning enabling acts and establish the rental of dwellings, both long-term and short-term, as being a residential use of the property that is permitted in all residential zoning districts. It's not, it would be not subject to a special use or conditional use permit or procedure different from those required for other dwellings in the same zone, and it would establish that they are not a commercial use of the property. And something significant to note, that, that act would define short-term rental as the rental of a single-family residence, a dwelling unit, any unit or group of units in a condo for terms of not more than 30 consecutive days. The township definition tags that at 90. So, quite the difference there. These bills would allow local governments to retain some rights to regulate and enforce, obviously, the existing zoning ordinances and nuisance ordinances for trash and noise and things like that. They would also allow local governments to limit the number of short-term rentals under common ownership to two or more, as well as the total number of units used for short-term rental use being no less than 30% of the number of existing residential units. The full texts, those, the full text of both of those bills are, are in your packet. There was also, at the last meeting, questions regarding property insurance. Most, if not all, insurance companies classify rental of residential property, including short-term rentals, as a business activity. And so therefore, any incident and associated damages occurring while renters are occupying that property would not be covered. Generally, commercial coverage costs three to five times more than non-commercial insurance, so not to jump to conclusions, but it can kind of be implied that some, some of these people that are getting approved for short-term rental use are not getting that additional insurance coverage. Many insurance companies do, however, offer short-term rental property rent insurance packages that kind of have insurance devices for both commercial and residential insurance vehicles, I guess. And it is, I think, important to note that many sites, not many, but some, including Airbnb for sure, I didn't dive into it one by one, but they do provide property damage and personal liability coverage to short-term rental hosts that use that platform. In the case of Airbnb, I think they cover up to $1 million.
Do we, do we have any requirement? Or should we even consider having a requirement that to approve a short-term rental, we at least have some proof from the applicant that they have such a policy to cover liability?
So that, that's up for discussion. The last iteration of the planning commission that approved this decided not to go that far. Because most people do use Airbnb or VRBO, which do offer that rider. And so, but, Amy, the funny thing is, and we were talking about this with the fire department today at our meeting with them, you know, you think there's only like a handful of these companies that provide that hosting service, but there's actually a myriad of them. If you were to put them all up on the TV, there'd probably be like 25 of them or more that are recognized. So that's something that the planning commission can take some time to think about, you know, maybe do a little bit of research on your own, or staff can delve into it a little bit more for you. We don't really have a recommendation on it, other than, you know, we wanted to get this information in your hands to let you chew on it a little bit.
To start those sessions. I'll finish up here, then we can certainly talk about it much more. So that kind of last component of this is the safety and compliance in short-term rentals. I, I think that safety issues in short-term rentals are largely the same as owner-occupied or rental property. However, they probably are intensified due to the transient nature of the, of the renters and an assumed unfamiliarity with the structure of the property and the surrounding area. Those four, four bullet points there are kind of the four significant areas of concern. These were drawn from that webinar I had mentioned last time, that talked in depth about each of these. Fire safety, obviously, egress routes, location of smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, unfamiliarity with appliances, et cetera. That's with our fire department inspections, I would say that's something we have relatively well-covered. I would say there's room for improvement in any of these, though. Next one being construction and maintenance, including maintenance of house features like decks, stocks, appliances, et cetera. Water safety, including pool safety measures, watercraft safety measures, and swimming safety measures. And residential properties as a pseudo-commercial use, so overuse and/or substandard maintenance of appliances like refrigerators, washers, and dryers. There's information there about the fire department inspections. And then, to finish, there is some, I guess, examples and/or, I wouldn't call them recommendations, but maybe some best practices from other communities. So I note that some communities do require that all short-term rental contracts and/or informational packets in the rentals themselves, so a lot of times they'll have a binder in there with information about local restaurants and amenities around town and activities to do. So communities will require that in those packets or somewhere in the rental that copies of the local ordinances are included, and/or a good neighbor brochure, so to speak, that maybe staff or somebody else compiles to be included in each of those, each of those rentals. Requiring property and, and/or local rules and a floor plan to be posted in a conspicuous location in the structure could have a positive effect in your packet. There are photos that I took, actually, on my, on my recent trip to Florida. We stayed in an Airbnb, short-term rental, and these were posted right in the kitchen. So you'll see it's a pretty extensive list of rules, most of them pretty basic, some that you would hopefully assume that renters would know, but again, assume they know nothing, I think, is a good assumption. And then you can also see that floor plan with marked egress exits, as well as contact information for emergencies, things like that. Some communities do institute a three-strike rule, which is just as it sounds, if there's three substantiated complaints, either in violation of an ordinance or the specific rules for short-term rentals as we have them, that permit can be revoked. And additionally, some communities have adopted a permanent residency requirement, which kind of lose my train of thought, dovetails off of the conversation we were just having with the applicant that was in the room. So that kind of maybe help manage the intensity of these uses. And this would involve requiring the permit holder to verify residency on an annual basis, would effectively create an upper limit on the number of days the property is rented out each year. As Jason mentioned, we met with the fire department today, and coordination with them is ongoing, and it will likely intensify as we kind of further delve into this stuff. So, that's all I've got, available for any questions, otherwise, hopefully this gets some wheels turning, so.
I think there's lots to discuss here, lots of things we can change and add, and I, I drove by Hurst at Aunt Cherry Street, and the thing that struck me right away is, I don't know if any, anybody else has driven by that, that house, but the side of her house and the back of the house on the next street over are probably like about 10 feet. There's 10 feet between, actually 10 feet between them.
There's three houses there, I believe Hurst is one of them, and I believe they're habitat-free, you know?
So, I mean, it's not going to take much for people to make noise and disturb those neighbors, you know, 10 feet away, in, in summer especially, and the yard is, there's a privacy fence there. But, you know, there again, you don't know if you're gonna have any problems, and you know, she can kind of control it, maybe she'd control it, I don't know, but I think these are the things that we could look at, and you know, even, even this with the vacation rental, you know, having this posted in there in the house, and you know, I like, I like a lot of these rules in here and on the back where your exits are and all that stuff, it's kind of a good idea for all that, but and the three-strike rule even. But I, I think it's something we could consider adding to what we have now.
Yeah, to follow up on what Jim is saying. When we accept the application for a short-term rental, do we have do we have a little informational sheet that would mirror some of these concerns that the person could be aware of, like, you know, especially on the safety and compliance issues?
Yeah, so we talked about that today, and what we talked about doing is getting a packet online, or at least handing them out when they apply or they want to apply, and having the checklist that the fire department uses, because it's fairly extensive. And we'll provide you with a copy of that moving forward here, but that and, and maybe the list of rules, I think what Eric put together was really helpful, and even his recent experience in Florida was helpful, in coming up with some of those bullet points, but it's one thing to, I guess, rely on things and be reactive to something that might happen, as opposed to being proactive. And I think that what I'm hearing from the planning commission is that you like to be a little bit more proactive on curtailing some of these issues that, you know, that have come up. And that way, when people show up that might be in opposition, at least they'd know that, you know, there's gonna be a fairly vetted process to allow the short-term rental, if that makes it past, you know, the judge and jury of the people that were within the 300-foot boundary. But yeah, I think it's something we could put together pretty easily, as far as the informational packet goes. As far as changing the ordinance requirements, you know, that's something that we can talk about further, but maybe there's a couple steps that doesn't, that does not require a zoning text amendment that we could take now without having to go through a public hearing and, and all that stuff to amend the ordinance. If that's what you'd like to try first, is the first step.
Well, what are the, in terms of amend, I mean, I was thinking, more or less, to provide these people with, you know, these various topics, so they'll be, in, in their minds, so they can be, oh, gee, I should be concerned about safety, I should be concerned about my liability if somebody jumps headfirst off my deck, maybe I should, you know, take care of some stuff like this, or, you know, as you say, the, the fire, the hazards that might be associated with, with, you know. So that's what I was thinking of, but I mean, if there are some things that people are thinking of that are in the, are, are ordinance itself and need to be tightened up, what, what are those? What are some of the others?
I don't know. I love, I always look at zoning, making amendments when you have issues. We really don't have an issue with how the short-term rentals are being operated. I think if we can provide the courtesy of, to the applicant, just saying, hey, you know, the planning commission is gonna grill you on this, we're gonna grill you on this, we want you to know and be aware that the township takes this very seriously, although we are allowing it and we will regulate it, that we're taking it seriously, and here are, here are a bullet point list of things that you need to take into consideration before you move forward.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, so how about we, for the next meeting, we draft some stuff up that we'll hand out and have you guys take a look at it?
Yeah, I concur. You know, because if you look at that, because even though the state might not consider it a commercial entity, insurance companies do. And when they say that it's three times more than homeowner's insurance, holy cow, then you're starting to get into some serious cash then. I don't think we can require people to have insurance, because we, we would have to retroactively require people that have rental, renters, rentals to do it as well. You know, nobody can force me to have homeowner's insurance on my home. If I have my home paid off, if I want to take a chance and let it burn to the ground, that's, that's on me. So, I mean, if, if nobody can force me to have insurance on my home, it'd be tough to force someone to have commercial liability on a short-term rental, I think. Maybe, maybe Canada, if you don't want to do it, that's, you know, but that's, that's, you know, who are we protecting, I mean, at that point, you know?
Well, you could be protecting, I guess, you'd have to think of some scenarios, but I guess you could be protecting adjacent homes and neighbors.
Yeah, fire, I mean, could spread, especially in the situation that we're gonna look at here. 10 foot, if, if Jim is right, is the minimum separation of buildings that we allow for in township, or fire separation.
Well, this is to say that this is a property where they allow snowmobiling. Well, what about if some, somebody from from Arkansas who's never seen snow or a snowmobile gets up here and gets on a snowmobile and runs it right through a neighbor's front window? Then the neighbor then is injured, but if there's no liability coverage to compensate that injured neighbor for the act of the renter, of the short-term renter, then that is an effect on the community as opposed to just, you know.
Potentially, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
So, what do you guys think about either having commercial renters' insurance or using a hosting service that, that, that carries that for them? So it's an and/or?
Either one, yeah.
Or it's an either-or scenario?
Yeah, I kind of raised this as an, as a question about whether it was considered or not, so I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that, oh yeah, we should do it. I'm saying, let's discuss it, and if you- I'm saying, let's discuss it and if you think that's a good idea, then let's do it, you know?
Yeah, so I remember a little bit about when we talked about it. I think it was a cost thing that we didn't know if you wanted to impose on the people. And not knowing that VRBO or Airbnb have an insurance rider use their service.
And then how much would you require them to carry? And for what, you know, would you require it to carry for fire, for this and then in this?
Yeah.
Million-dollar limits and twenty million-dollar.
Yeah, you're bringing up some of the concerns.
You know, all of a sudden you could price everybody out of business, you know? I'm sure Jim doesn't want people to tell him how much insurance he has to carry, do they, Jim?
Well, exactly, and I don't have to carry any insurance if I don't want to. I think the roof is calm, you know, for employees, but.
The common sense of it.
Yeah, if I don't have any liability and somebody chokes a die, you know, then I'm out of luck. I'm in trouble if I don't have any insurance, but, you know. But of course, you know, then there's the theory, the more insurance you have, the more they're going to sue you. Plus insurance you have, what are they going to sue you for?
I didn't mean.
That's why you have an LLC too.
I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to create a solution looking for a problem.
No, but no, you bring an interesting angle to the planning commission with your background in legalese, so.
I just wonder if you're, next time you're chatting with Zapata, what his thoughts may be.
Yeah, we talked last Friday, but it was about Land Division Act. So next time I talk to him, we'll bring up the.
Tie a string around your fingers.
Yeah, well, thank you.
And I think another thing is like if we're requiring it, then who's monitoring it? Did they get a rider every time they had a separate?
Right, thanks for saying that because, again, we like to have ordinances as long as they're applicable and enforceable. And I think if we get too bit, too much into the minutia, then sometimes you lose what your initial goal was.
Well, maybe just if in your informational packet, maybe you could mention to them that, you know, if you have a.
To not be found liable for injuries.
If your renter injures somebody, your neighbor or something, they're probably going to hold you responsible.
And we strongly recommend.
Maybe you should, yeah, think about getting some insurance, you know?
Okay, yeah, we can insert that.
Well, I have another question that you mentioned about the, this is kind of backing up to the Senate bills and House bills. Where the, they're setting a 30-day limit rather than 90 days, so that's kind of more restrictive than what we have now?
Right, yeah, most ordinances, honestly, I've looked at a few over my time and most ordinances are 30 days or more for just regular rental, long-term rental. Ours is a little bit more than that. Not sure why, that could probably be changed, you know, one of those things that we could change.
No, I just wondered, I think ours is fine, I don't care, but I was wondering, was there a reason why they put it to 30 or?
That's because that's what most ordinances indicate, yeah.
So when I was reading that, I was just thinking, okay, so if you rent there for 30 days, can you read, can the same person renew that for another 30 days? So you can just keep doing that as long as you want?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know why you'd want to, I mean, instead of doing a long term lease, but.
Well, we're hearing, we're hearing that because of the hospital, a lot of the short-term rentals are actually traveling medical folks who are, they are here for more than two days, you know, they're here.
Typically about three months.
Three months, so that's a positive thing, I guess, when it comes to turnover. Obviously educated affluent people are the type of people you'd like to have renting from you or we have in our communities, so that helps too. But yeah, that's a good discussion and I think we can provide you with something that will put you a little bit more at ease.
I think her letter helped. That's not required though, right? She just provided it with information, why do it?
A narrative is required with each special use permit regardless of. But she did a good job.
Just out of curiosity, did you suggest she should be here tonight or did you tell her she had to be here tonight?
I, what I tell everybody is I strongly encourage it or strongly advise it.
Yeah, it was nice that she was here, yeah.
Put a name with a face and all, you know, the things. So when you see her come back and represent herself on the 25th of May, you'll know who she is already and that's helpful. I think she's an educator in the district.
Your hills, yeah. You know, I was looking at, you know, if these Senate bill or House bill, either one of them does pass, it's not really taking control out of the township as far as regulating how they're controlled. It's just how many you can have and if you can have them. But you still have all those zoning ordinances in effect to control the noise and the parking and all that.
The nuisance issues, yeah.
Yeah, so the township can still control all that.
Well, there won't be, we may have a zoning application, which if they meet the minimum requirements, we shall approve. As opposed to conducting a public hearing and notifying neighbors, that would not occur anymore. But who knows, I mean, we're not there yet, so we don't know. And maybe there's other communities that are thinking creatively, you know, saying, you know, every year we're going to publish where all the short-term rentals are in our, you know, monthly flyer or on the back of retail or something, I don't know. But just so everybody's aware of it. But yeah, it's an interesting topic and you look at a woman like Damiya who's a single mother apparently and has a small home in Trowbridge and just trying to get by. And these are the types of things that can, if conducted correctly, can help somebody out financially, so.
Well, and that's kind of what I was thinking, you know, Steve was talking before about when we denied that. And, you know, I've kind of been thinking about that since then and, you know, for one or two people to come here and keep them from getting that, you know, I guess maybe we should like give them a chance more like what you guys were saying and see how it works out and do the three-strike rule or whatever and, you know, if you have problems with it, then after a year you don't do it anymore and just see how it goes for them.
You could take it out of the special use category and make it permitted, provided those things were in place. Because it would take any of your concerns to put them on paper and into the ordinance or not necessarily into the ordinance, but it would put them on paper so that they had to comply with those things or they're going to lose their permit too. So it's something to think about the next, you know, couple of weeks or as we get further into that. I guess the subject of providing information to the applicant. I don't think it's going to go away. I think it's only becoming more.
No, I, yeah, I think they're really going to start to get more and more, the more people talk about it. They know, money friend's doing this, I'm going to do this with mine and.
Well, I just had a recreation committee meeting just before this and Joe Sheddard's on the committee. And he told me he's got a house out on Mea Lake that was, he inherited and it's paid for and all he does is pay taxes and insurance on it and he didn't know what to do with it. It's like, well, you should take a look at it right now. And it's out in Quinn, of course, but. He was completely unaware, I mean, just, he'd used rentals on vacations and stuff, but didn't put two and two together that that could be something that would benefit his family or his grandkids, whatever, you know, some days, so. It's an interesting topic, for sure.
Yeah, people making big money on this. I was just talking to a friend of mine that has four different houses in different parts of the country. And the money she's getting for that, and she said.
She's probably financially independent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She is, but.
They say if you have three, you could be financially independent.
Yeah, but she said she's making big money off of all, and she has one on our train here too and.
And you noticed in Eric's report that there is a company that manages that property that he rented, not the owner. So that's after all the expenses, whether you have HOAs or insurance or cleanup costs and maintenance. I mean, these people are making a lot of money.
Well, her, the agency that rents it out and cleans it, but only charges 20% of what the income comes in for the year. So I didn't think that was bad at all.
I think Airbnb takes another 20.
Oh, really?
I think it's something like that, yeah. Well, yeah, you have to pay, to use their service, you do pay a fee.
Okay.
So that's, that's the kickback.
Yeah.
But.
Two-way review process, the insurance.
After you correct the numbers, I think it's still always going to be worth it. When you look at hotels, you know, the way they charge in the summer, I mean.
Yeah, it's gotten way worse lately too.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Sixty Nakamana Trail Network e-bike inquiry discussion. Interesting?
Interesting, yeah, so this came to us from MTN and basically they have a policy in place that they would like support for. And that policy is that they allow class one e-bikes on their trail system. And class two and class three e-bikes are not permitted because it could be almost like a moped, you know, type of scenario where the class one e-bikes are pedal assist less than 20 miles an hour.
The class two is still 20 miles an hour too, so I.
Right, but it's got a throttle on it, unassisted.
Meaning you can start digging into the dirt more and RPMs or?
Or that you don't have to pedal at all. It's unassisted. Brought it to the rec committee, okay, so this came to us, I said, John, what do you, you know, to the manager, how do you want to handle this? Because, you know, we could just get it off our plate pretty easy and just support MTN. But he suggested, and I thought it was a good idea, to run it through our chain of command, which would be, start with the rec committee. And then rec committee provided a recommendation tonight that the planning commission support MTN's policy for their trails that they operate with the caveat that they should provide some education and some signage to denote that. And they recommended that, again, the planning commission recommended to the board, because that's where they'll suppo next, that you support MTN's, I guess, policy, which was also included in your packet too, if you have a chance to. And the reason for this is because they don't want the trails to turn into, you know, motorbike trails and having motorcycles and things of that nature or even electric vehicles. There are some electric bikes that are pretty powerful and they do and will tear up the trails, so.
Those are the class C or three or whatever that is?
Twos and threes, yeah.
28?
Yeah, so these class one bikes are already out on the trails. Every, you know, there's a lot of people that are using them already. And so all of the surrounding municipalities besides Marquette Township basically has supported MTN's request in that they support the policy. And so I guess from staff's perspective, that's what we're recommending to each of the bodies that this will go in front of as well. Kind of a complex issue, but not really. I mean, they're, they're basically allowing the lowest class of e-bikes to be.
How do they?
Be on the road.
Yeah, how do you police something like that?
Good point.
And if I might, I'm actually picking up my two e-bikes on Friday. I purchased them in December, had them assembled and they're being stored and I'm going to go pick them up. They're class two bikes, okay? 20 miles an hour pedal assist or throttle that you can disconnect. So you can turn that throttle function off, you got a little kid riding it, you don't want the kid actually beating the throttle. Again, how do you police something like that?
Yeah, I kind of saw this more as a.
On your system kind of thing?
What we called in the Marine Corps, a dog and pony show. Where you're using good PR to support e-bikes to a certain point. And then MTN's, you know, kind of, I don't know if they're trying to have the class ones be supported by all the communities so that they can regulate the trails, perhaps that's a reason. Or maybe they're going after some grants that would allow class one bikes but not.
So what are the Nakamana Trail Networks? Are they difficult trails to ride? I mean, I'm not going to be riding none of them, I e-bike, I don't fit.
Yeah, some of them you could, like the green and red loops, you could on the south side.
Okay.
But some are super technical too.
Right, right, I was just kind of curious. Anyway, so I got that, I got a class two because that's just the way they make these bikes that I purchased. Yeah, and have you ever ridden one?
I had a class.
It's cooler than hell. My wife and I went to the Apostle Islands, right? There's an island out there, Madeline Island, you can rent e-bikes. We did 20 miles, we didn't break a sweat. And we were just pedaling, there were no throttles, they don't have throttle assists there, just pedaling.
It matches your input, you know?
What a wonderful thing that is, you know? Amazing.
Yeah, I'm a big supporter of e-bikes. Remember about six years ago, I got an invite on like a Tuesday with one-hour notice to go meet some of the bike dealers in town at the south trails to go try out these new e-bikes. And I wasn't able to be there, but I started to think about mobility and as you get older and just your ability to get around. And immediately as a planner, I was like, okay, I support this, you know, this is great. So it's just kind of a continuation of that, I hope. And we have a really good relationship with MTN.
Yeah.
They've helped us, we've helped them and I see that as continuing. So I hope that the planning commission would support this and move it to the board for their consideration. I don't see the board wanting to get involved with trail regulations, to be honest with you. But this did come from the executive director asking us to get this taken care of or get some kind of opinion on it so that they can move forward with their planning.
What's the, what's the reports of interaction between pedestrians using the trails and the bikes?
Oh, that's always been conflicting, you know? For instance, on the south trails, there's people that have been hunting those trails and walking and their dogs on those trails for longer than the trails have been there. And then you have mountain bikers that are come screaming down a flow system and, you know, all of a sudden there's a dog and a person. But that's not going to go away either and that happens all over the country. What my hope is, I guess someday is, if you're familiar with Bentonville in Arkansas, Walmart actually constructed in partnership with the local trail builders, a mountain bike mecca there. And so they do have trails that are dedicated to hiking and then they have trails that are dedicated to mountain biking. Unfortunately, we don't have a Walmart headquartered here. But MTN is highly supported and I think eventually if it continues and we keep working with them and if we start writing grants together to help, I guess, grow that network and infrastructure, whether it be parking lots or trailheads, that is only going to keep going and continue to be popular. I mean, it's a major, major component of the local economy, whether you want to admit it or not. They have constructed a world-class system here and it's highly regarded, so. We're just trying to protect that, also allow some e-bikes. You know, not the class twos or the class threes on the trails per se, but like you said, if they catch Steve out there with his class two.
Well, I could just show my throttle's not working.
Yeah, yeah, because it says throttle disconnected, yeah, so.
So are you, are you asking the planning commission to make a motion tonight to approve this?
Yes, to recommend to the township board that they support MTN's statement of use on e-bikes. Simple as that.
Well, before you made that motion, I kind of have some issues with, I understand the thinking behind not allowing the other two to be on there, but that's kind of regulating the trail. And you said you don't want to get into the issue of regulating it, but by doing that, you are kind of regulating it. And you're saying, we'll just let that bike go, but Steve on his bike can't go on there. So, you know, it's kind of discriminatory in a way because, you know, older people want to get something like that. And you're saying, all right, we'll let everybody else use these trails, but you can't use it because you've got a throttle on your bike. I don't think that's right.
That's a good point. I guess my comments and opinions come from the point that I don't want to have to regulate trails. Eric doesn't want to regulate trails.
And you wouldn't.
Let's say let MTN regulate the trails.
And you wouldn't be.
But some of them are on our property, though.
Well, but, but by agreeing to what they're saying, you're, all you'd have to do is say, we don't agree with that, we think you should allow all the e-bikes on there.
You could say that.
We don't allow motorized vehicles on.
Well, it's not a motorized vehicle though.
They're close.
With the throttle it is, that's where the difference is.
Well, the, all of them would be, so the class one would be.
If MTN was discriminating, they wouldn't allow any e-bikes above. But that's, again, impossible to enforce.
Right.
And especially with the more modern mountain bikes because it's not some big motor on the back, like the Bosch motors on the back of the hub. These are in the crankcase and the crankcase is, you know, nowadays without an e-bike motor, it's maybe this big. And then with an e-bike motor, it's maybe only that big. It's really hard to tell.
With the three different classes, they're all about the same type?
No, I would say with the other two classes, you're going to have more visible components, yeah.
Is there like a higher RPM reading or any horsepower?
Watts.
Watts? So what's?
Watts and mile per hour capability.
So what's the watt difference? So what's the watt difference between like class one and.
I think, well, countries limit them. I think in England it's like. Two hundred and fifty. I think in Canada it's five hundred watts. In the United States. Mine is seven hundred and fifty, and I think.
That's right.
You can get bigger, but I think that they limit it to seven fifty, or most of them limit to seven hundred and fifty watts, which is considerable. I mean, you can get to twenty miles an hour in about three seconds, so.
Look at it this way, Steve. NTN operates non-motorized trails. They're allowing. A motorized component on the trails. But only the class one.
Do these, I'm totally unfamiliar with these things. Do they, do they self-replenish?
There are a couple that regenerate, but most of them, most of them is just total loss, right?
Okay.
Charge them up.
And the colder it is, the worse it is on them.
But, you know, forty-five miles is long, good ride.
Mm-hmm. That's almost the entirety of the Iron Hill Trail.
Yeah. But then pedaling back.
What brand did you get?
A Rad out of Seattle.
Yep.
They're a direct ship from the fact, from the manufacturer. There's no middleman, so.
I've always kinda wondered about that though, you, what you just said, Jason, you know, they're. They do all this, they, they regulate it. Do they have a right to regulate this? Because it's not their property. And so if a four-wheeler's on there. Can they say you're not allowed to be on here? You know, or there, there's, there's not a law against it because it's not their trail to regulate. It's, it's landowners. And the township can't even say anything because it's not the township's property.
It could be that the agreements that they have through private landowners stipulate that we wanna allow motorized vehicles on this trail and the homeowner said, or landlord said, okay, that's fine. You know what I'm saying? I mean, cause a landlord.
If they do, but I don't, I don't think they have.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what.
I don't think landlords would agree to that.
Yeah, I have no idea.
But it'd be interesting to find out because I've heard stories of bikers saying, you're not allowed on here, you know, pedestrians. Not allowed on our trails.
Oh, that's just ignorance.
What is?
Yeah.
But, but I just wanted to find out, is that true? Can, can the NTN say pedestrians can't use this, cross-country skiers can't use this? Four-wheelers can't use this, motorbikes can't use this?
I believe. So NTN has a license agreement with the township. We allow them to operate trails, non-motorized. On, and that just started recently, within the last couple of years. And I think that they have an agreement with the city too, which is kinda what we gleaned from when we did ours. But we wanted to get some kind of teeth into NTN, if you will, with regard to them utilizing property that we own or the township owns.
That you own. Right.
Right.
That's the catch.
Right, but then you have.
Stuff that's privately owned.
Well, then you have like the Longyear property up north. And that's CFA land or commercial forest land. And you can only, was it hump, fish, trap and hike. So they've been letting them kinda do what they want with trails as long as it's non-motorized. For a number of years too, so it does come up, come down to the landowner a little bit. They've been operating kind of, you know, like laze affair for a while. I guess I haven't taken the time to like delve into this subject, and I prefer not to. I just prefer to let NTN keep. The, you know, the positive thing going that they have going.
What do we get from NTN? I mean, what, what's the positive thing that the township gets from?
Tourists.
People in our community.
People.
Spending money.
Spending money, okay, okay.
Exercise. Increased health.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of, you know, residual. Benefits in what they do.
Yeah, I am not in any way trying to say I, I don't think they should be doing any of this, you know, they do a great job, but. Just, you know, for what they think they can do and what they can do. Cause I'm just, I've always been curious about that.
What.
Can they really regulate?
I think it's a sixty-four thousand dollar question, right?
I don't think they can, but.
They can have opinions and policies in place as a nonprofit that operates with licenser, licenser on. Municipal owned property. So I think that's fairly significant. I thought it was interesting that since the regulations have been in act, the sale of e-mountain bikes has drastically increased. In two thousand seventeen, sales of e-mike. E-mountain bike has increased ninety-one percent.
Now, it's somewhere that sixty percent of all bicycles sold in the United States are e-bikes right now. More e-bikes sold than regular bikes. It's not surprising, I mean, they're gangbusters.
So again, I think this is a situation where we're trying to be more proactive than reactive, and it's just a way to help them. Continue with having safe trails, inclusive trails. And this is kind of a mechanism for them to do that.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's a great one, but I just think it should go a little bit further and letting at least class two. Poor Steve on there.
Yeah.
You know, class three, I guess I can understand that where, you know, it's got a lot more power. How many watts would in class three then? Do you think? You're seven fifty?
It's gotta be higher if it can go twenty-eight miles an hour. You know, I, well, I can, I can pedal mine forty-five mile an hour, but my throttle will take it up to twenty mile an hour. I can pedal my guts out as fast as I can, but the electric assist stops at twenty miles an hour.
But those bikes are very heavy though, aren't they?
Seventy-five pounds.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't wanna run out of battery power.
Yeah.
Going uphill.
Are your brakes, mechanical brakes or the power?
Just brakes.
They must really slow down when you're going up a grade then. No? They keep going? They have that much power? They still keep going at the. So with your throttle, can you set it like a twenty miles an hour like cruise control?
Just turn it on.
Oh, it's just like, okay.
Turn and just. It's like a Tesla. Power now.
Really?
You know, you refer to, in your report, Jason, the state regulation. Has left it up to agents who manage properties designated to the e-bikes.
That's correct.
So there is a statute? Or a reg, or some kind of reg, state regulation?
Well, the state, yeah, the state deferred to the locals.
Okay, but there is a, there is a piece of paper issued by the state that says they can do this.
I believe you're right, yes.
Okay.
And I think when this goes to the board, I will ask the NTN executive director to be there to ask, or answer some of these more direct questions.
So just out of curiosity, if we, if we did. Do it, recommend class one and class two, do you think NTN would even think about allowing class twos on there if?
Probably not.
Probably not?
I mean, maybe they consider it.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, why don't you throw, you could do it this way. You make a motion. You could make a motion that you support one and two, if, if that's the way you wanna go.
That's what I.
But the township board's gonna do, but the township board is then gonna do what they want.
Right.
I'm just the messenger. And I would think that NTN has had some of these discussions and have. You know, maybe, you know.
Amongst their own members.
When they conduct a race in the community, they have insurance riders that cover the township and indemnify the township, so. There may be issues with that, as to why they don't or not gonna allow class two.
I think it's more just erosion, just so you don't start digging trenches.
Certainly possible.
Yeah.
Could that bike really do that, that you have?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think, I'm, I'm sure it would move more dirt than you would pedaling, and I think, you know, every little bit, once it starts, then. You know.
Is the iron roll that's gonna be held in June, this is on Nakamenon Trails?
Uh, I think that's predominantly on the Iron Hill Trail.
And there's no limitations for e-bikes on that, is there?
I don't believe so, but we can, we can find that out. That's.
How do you wanna know?
You're right.
Ignorance is bliss.
There, there might be on that if, if they're considering that a motor.
Rational for. For getting wet and stuff, isn't it?
It, it's really not a defense.
Yeah, the Iron Hill Trail from April.
Right, snowmobiles can go under that.
December one is a non-motorized.
Yeah.
But I think they have to allow e-bikes. I've seen a lot of e-bikes on there.
Like you said, how do you police it? You know, what are you gonna do if you catch somebody out there? Get off your bike or confiscate it?
Yeah, I think it has more to do with like education, awareness than anything.
Okay. You can do a motion now if anybody. So desires.
Okay, I'll make a motion to support NTN's policy to allow only class one e-bikes to be used on the majority of NTN trails. For recreational use in Marquette.
Yeah, what does majority mean? Are they gonna allow it on some, you know? When they say majority of the trails. Some trails they might allow, different classes.
How do they explain that? Oh, I think where that comes into play is in the wintertime, cause some of the trails are dedicated, ski trails.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'll second Jenny's motion.
Are the. Search and rescue e-bikes just class one?
I don't know. But, you know, the sheriff's department can go on T L Lake with a motorized boat too, so there's that.
Okay. We have a motion.
You got a second?
Not yet.
Yeah, I, I second.
Oh, you did second?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear you, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who are we here? Capital Improvement Program update.
No. City of Marquette.
Oh, did I skip one? Oh, yeah, sorry.
So this is just informational. Uh, this is out on the basin. Right, uh, south of the township. Put together a PowerPoint today, okay? Excuse me. Just south of the township line. So essentially, this is the end of Blue Hare and Bluffs two to the north, and then there's a couple of properties here that are proposed to be rezoned. The zoning in this area currently is conservation. And they're requesting the rezoning to go to low-density residential. So I included. In there. The zoning language for low-density residential from the city. And. As a, a property owner within three hundred feet, which we, I guess, are, not property owners, but a community within three hundred feet. We got the notification. So if there's any concerns or things that you. Want to have staff put together as a rebuttal or some kind of transmission back to the city. The one thing that we do have an issue with if this moves forward is that there likely going to be access by the end of Blue Hare and Bluffs. Road or trail, I think it is, they call it. That is a very long private drive. And so if you're gonna add, you know, several more homes out there, that's something that, I guess, from a staff perspective, regardless of what you have to say, will probably relay back to the city then.
The access to that doesn't go through the township, does it?
Well, that's what we're thinking, cause that's Pasola that is, he's right at the end. So Bruce Pasola. Lives here. And he's asking to have this property and this property rezoned. For the purpose of developing some home sites. You know, they're called Iron Shore Development LLC, but I suspect that it's. So the last page of your packet tonight is the rezoning application that was submitted to the city.
Where is this located?
Uh, you know who that is? Jim Conklin on behalf of Bruce Pasola, so there you go.
Is that on five fifty?
Nope.
Forestville or Granite?
Is it where those.
How do you get to it?
All those new lots are along there?
It's, it's, yeah, it's all landlocked, right? So. You can't get to it unless you go all the way around up through Forestville and then take Blue Hare and Bluffs road. All the way around past the new, past the new Blue Hare and Bluffs. And the original site condominium.
But a dead end's up there at the end, doesn't it?
That's what we're saying, it, it dead ends.
So how you, how do you get through there?
You don't. It's in a cul-de-sac.
So how's he gonna get to those?
Cul-de-sac, that's a two-track, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm hoping that the planning commission has a little bit of concern about. That rezoning and the potential addition of more home sites at the end of, basically a dead-end road with no outlet.
Well, I got an issue with spot zoning.
Spot zoning?
Yeah, that one lot's a spot, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Well, it's similar to the zoning that we have just on our side of the township line, which is scenic residential, which is also low-density residential.
Yeah.
You don't have a bigger map we could look at? See, I'm trying to get my bearings on this and I. I'm kinda lost here.
Literally, he's, he's getting, he has a lot that he wants rezoned, right?
I haven't seen any other pictures in there.
I don't think the jurisdictional boundaries are there.
No, give me a better idea though.
Click on the satellite.
Yeah. So you go past all those. Those new houses that, that he developed the past few years on the new road that they put in there?
Yeah.
You go past there.
All the way around.
And then you go all the way up there, up to the dead end, and it's just like a.
So our private road ordinance, just so you know, a private road is not supposed to touch more than three properties. If it does, it should be brought up to a county eight spec.
Is that a private road that goes up to the end?
Yes.
So how is it a private if it's touching all those properties?
Happened before my time.
So if he develops more, it needs to be.
You know, I don't know. That's my concern, is what I'm telling you, and I hope the planning commission has the same concern.
We hear you.
Is that?
We hear you.
Is that five fifty at the top?
No.
Okay.
No, that is Blue Hare and Bluffs road.
Blue Hare and Bluffs road, okay.
Where's Wright Street in relationship to this?
It's just, just to the east.
Okay.
That's not it, that's the power line. Okay, so here's Wright Street.
Okay, where's Forestville?
Forestville Road. Here's the falls over here. Here's the bridge. And then here's the Blue Hare and Bluffs two, and then here's Blue Hare and Bluffs one. These are all beautiful home sites. But the problem is, is if you have a fire back here, the only way to get here. And there's no, there's no water infrastructure, there's no hydrant here. In the spring, there's, it would be a. Lack of a better term, shit show to get back here. So, yeah.
Could he?
So where's, where's, where's the development going there? Where, where's the additional stuff coming?
Well, you can't see it, but the township line is like right here.
Okay.
And the area that they're proposing to rezone is right here and right here.
So it's in the city?
Correct.
It's all in the city.
Mm-hmm.
So it's really up to the city whether, you know.
Right, but certainly the planning commission.
We can send a letter.
Send a letter.
Tell the, tell on them, we don't think it's a good idea because it's spot zoning and whatever.
And that might be a letter that either I write or Attorney Zaput.
That's what I was gonna say, I think. Somebody from the staff should do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we should request we get a letter.
Okay, and your objections are due to the lack of reasonable, well, not reasonable, but proper access. And.
Spot zoning?
Potential spot zoning issue. Okay. That's enough to go on. Thank you.
This is, this isn't gonna go to the township board, this is just.
No.
Just recommendation.
So you're gonna talk to Zaput and Zaput's gonna write the letter?
I'll broach Zap on it, yeah. Sorry, Mr. Zappa.
Would the Township be involved in any way with that development as far as providing any services to them?
It depends what happens with the rezoning, because if they rezone it, one of us might have to attend that public hearing. I think that might be a good idea, too, because if they rezone that, they're gonna be able to build there. And if they're gonna build there, where are they gonna get to the site from? That, that, those are my main questions. I have no problem with low-density residential, add taxable value, add base, whatever, but...
And he has to get this rezoned in order to build?
Yes, it's conservation right now, which is basically like our forest recreation zoning, which doesn't allow very much, other than recreational use.
So are all those other little lots, they're all conservation and too?
Yes, the CR, yep.
So how do they build on those lots if it's?
Well, they haven't.
They haven't?
No.
Oh, those are all just vacant lots?
Correct.
But I thought he lived on one of them.
Well, it's to the north of the line, the city line, which is in the township.
Okay. And that's not CR there, then?
No, that property in the township is scenic residential.
Still says CR above the line. That's 585?
Um, no, that just might be a GIS thing where if the, if the label won't fit, then it goes outside the?
So it's all scenic residential there, okay.
The city doesn't have the ability to zone inside the township.
So why wouldn't he, does he own all that other property too?
What other?
All those other little lots?
I'm not sure.
Because he's only asking for that one out of all those other ones and?
Well, there's two.
Yeah, I know there's two, but I mean, all those other ones up above, the big one there?
Correct.
He must not own those, or?
I, I don't know. We don't have access to the city's parcel area, this came from the city. Yeah, we'll get that out. And then involving 8B, the manager asked, I did have a conversation with Manager Cangus about CIP, the fact that the planning commission wanted to get going on it. He asked us to just hold off on that, because he's gonna be sending out a transmittal of some kind to department heads, and I'll share that with you as soon as I have it.
Okay.
We don't have Township Board report tonight. 9B Recommiting met tonight, and we discussed the NTN proposal, and I relayed that the plan was registered with the state for the next five years, that was approved, and then we submitted the acquisition grant, and that is in process.
9C Road Committee has not met since the last time we met, so I have nothing to report. We do meet next week, so next time I'll have something to report.
Planning and zoning report, we do have a site plan coming to you. It'll be just west of the movie theater on the south side of Commerce and just east of Wright Street, so that corner lot of Cornerstone Business Park. And then I suspect before not too long, there'll be another site plan on the north side on that same corner by there. So business-type developments, very similar to what you see here with RE/MAX in Wells Fargo, like to a T. One of the buildings is just a cook, a boilerplate of that.
There are many lots left in here, are there?
Right, right.
Getting taken out.
And then we have a preliminary PUD conference with the larger residential development that we were talking about on May night. So I'll be able to disclose more information to you after that meeting.
We already know.
Yeah.
Can I ask you?
That's reverse psychology, Jim.
The development that's going on at the Marquette Mall?
I was just telling Bethany.
Is the Marquette Mall in the township?
Um, no.
The old Marquette Mall?
No.
I mean, where's that, where's that township?
The line goes on a 45-degree angle from southwest to northeast, across Pizza Hut's parking lot over to the villa. It's, it's so random.
I know, I, I know we did some, some drain work back there when I was surveying.
Yeah.
And it was a convoluted boundary line.
Oh, Mike Molesky said to say hi to you.
Mike, okay.
One of the reasons we were talking today was because I let them know that you're on our planning commission and that we may have a property issue over here on the end of Commerce, so we had a discussion today. There was an O'Reilly's going in.
Right, right, I saw that, but that's, that's.
And then they were out surveying, because I think there's a bank that's going in where Pizza Hut was.
I thought it was further east, in between Pizza Hut and that.
Maybe that's right, yeah, because Pizza Hut might be a standalone little area there, it could be. But yeah, there's lots of stuff going on in the community.
Is this PUD thing, was that that real big development you were talking about, the 2,200 acres or whatever?
Oh, it's just the first part of it.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Mixed use.
Very exciting stuff.
Mixed use.
Mixed residential.
Yeah.
Which would involve coordination, further coordination with the City of Marquette, too, so that's, that's as much as I'll, you'll get out of me tonight.
Jason, go ahead. Just for, all right, so the planned unit development, is this something where they wanna densify zoning in there that's not zoned, and they don't wanna go through the hassle of rezoning? So we'll just call it a PUD, and we're gonna make these little postage stamp lots in the middle of, but anyway, the same kind of thing that they did by the golf course. Instead of, you know, going with residential zoning that's out there, they got planned unit, so you get urban type of density in a rural district without going through the hassle of rezoning and all that stuff.
Yeah, I don't even think it's the hassle of rezoning, it's just something that's not currently available in our community, it's not... Is the density higher? Yes.
Yeah, is it, can you tell, is it gonna be subdivisions, condominiums?
I'd rather not say at this time.
Well, if, if they're looking that way, I'd say they're probably gonna build condos, because it's cheaper and quicker.
As long as there's gonna be a mix.
I mean, just condominiums, you know, are, condominium can be space, it doesn't have to be a building. A condominium can be a lot.
Yeah, I think, I think the?
Really a lot.
Like they did at the golf course, it'll all be under condominium.
Coming soon to an area that's near you.
We can speculate all night if we want.
I'll have to study up a little bit.
I, I wanna ask you, Jason, you know, you talked about some point in the past about that property, as you're going up 550, before the railroad tracks to the right, there's that, it's some kind of, I don't know, what, We? Is it We?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what's going on with that? That was gonna be opened up?
I was talking about the property on the left once you go over the tracks. There is a large road which went up to the Fly Ash area.
After you cross the tracks going north?
Yes.
To the west.
Yep, and so?
In the west, okay.
Not with getting into the miniature too much, but there was a local developer that was under contract for 475 acres. The Township supported the acquisition of that road and our local road network. I don't think the Road Commission's executed that yet, because I think We Energies wants the Road Commission to assume liability for any asbestos or any problems with contamination on the way out to the Fly Ash site. I don't know that the Road Commission wants to assume that liability, so I don't know if that road's gonna actually become part of our network or not. The problem with that is, if it doesn't become a public road, and then it's just a private road that somebody assumes liability for, it could hinder any potential development that occurs there in the next, you know, short amount of years.
So that's a coal ash, that's a coal ash pit up there, okay, that's?
Is that being remediated?
I don't know the answer to that. I would assume that some kind of development like that would have some kind of reclamation plan, but remember, this was in place far before any zoning was put in place.
No, but I'm talking about environmental concerns, I mean, you know, I mean, I mean, as far as cleaning up any environmental?
It's, that, that is an ongoing thing that they are requiring.
They are, they are doing that.
But I don't know how long, you know, they're assigned on the dotted line to take care of it, once they release. I don't think they're relinquishing that site or that property, it's the, it's the undeveloped property around the road. Of course, we're interested in having that picked up, because we could potentially loop, you know, Forestville Road across the bridge and all the way back around, including utilities, and all of a sudden we have thousands of acres available for residential development.
You like the model?
What's with the, the Forestville Road connection to 550? I mean, I tried to navigate that one time, and I got lost, and it's, I guess you can get through.
It's doable, yeah.
It's doable, but it's kinda like a logging road, isn't it?
Old logging roads that have been just kinda used to the point where they become passable. But yeah, there's some labeled county roads, if you use your GPS and your, I don't know if your phones would do it necessarily, because sometimes your reception's not that bad, or not that good, but if your, if your vehicle has it, typically the GPS signals are a lot stronger than your cellular services.
Well, I've had people come up from the south to visit us on Eagle's Nest, instead of coming into Marquette, coming out you know, past the college to, to 550. They were directed to go Forestville Road, and they were like, where in the hell are we? They just couldn't navigate it, so finally we rescued them, but anyway.
Yeah, I think the Road Commission and the Township Board had a joint meeting recently, and we've had some internal discussions with the Road Commission, and they've been asking us for our master plan and our transportation plan, because as they think about the community in the next 15, 10 years, or whatever, you know, they wanna know what we're planning, so that if they do request money from larger, you know, you know, the feds or the state for infrastructure development, then they wanna make sure that they're in line with what our plans are. So I thought that was very forward-thinking of the Road Committee, or the Road Commission, and I think that there's some positive relationships being developed along those lines to make that happen in the future. It's just, it's gonna be a process.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
We were, as long as we're on this planning and zoning report, we were just kinda wondering what happened with to north there? That's completely done with now, then, because of that right-of-way issue?
Uh, as far as I know, they, yes, they, they canceled their purchase agreement.
And I, I thought they were gonna reinstate it later on or something, or?
No idea.
Thought somebody said that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have those discussions at all.
So was it the right-of-way, the county wouldn't get up with the right-of-way, the Road Commission, or?
There's a, there's a process that needs to happen at the court, circuit court level, which may or may not have taken longer than the purchase agreement timeframe was, that they just didn't wanna deal with.
So is that, is that a planted alley? Must be.
Yes.
They're gonna have to vacate it through the court, otherwise the Road Commission could just go through a vacation process.
Yeah, it was part of the assessor's plan.
Yeah, that's probably what the hassle was.
And nobody really knew about it until it came time to do some need work, and then it kinda revealed itself. At least we know about it, and it's in the process, because I think the Road Commission still supports the abandoned, for the purpose of economic development.
That's it?
That's all I got on that, yeah. I know that the property's been relisted, and, and that there's some additional interest in the property.
So I mean, is that it without your report?
Oh, yes, unless you have any questions as well.
Okay.
Oh, lastly. In front of you, I included this sheet. You do have a planning budget, a planning commission budget, so if there are any educational opportunities that you'd like to take advantage of, I'll, you know, hand these out. If you need coordination with hotel rooms or anything like that, let us know, and we can certainly make that happen for you, so I'll try to do a better job of conveying these to you throughout the year as they become available.
Was this everything that Lynn emailed us?
Probably.
Okay.
There's a lot of redundancy with emails that goes on in the office, because for some reason, they think we don't get the same emails.
They looked familiar as well, just making sure it was the same ones. Okay. So if anybody is interested, they get ahold of you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we could, we could take care of that for you.
Is anyone from the Township going to that that you know of, any of these?
Not these ones, no.
No? Are there any other ones you'd recommend?
Yeah, I just received an email from Brad Newman, did you get on that list, too? Um, we'll send that one along to you as well.
Through MSU Extension?
Yeah, he does a good job, and, and I think his webinars or those types of workshops are a lot more relevant to us than maybe some of the, well, I can't say that about MTA, because they're a Township Association, but they're closer, they're cheaper, and they're more applicable to our site situation.
Any announcements? I don't think we'll have any public comments, since there isn't any public here anymore. So then we'll go to additional comments by planning commissioners, and we'll start with Steve.
I have not, I just, Eric?
Yeah, there was a discussion of the Campoe Creek Coaster Work Trout Project or Study, whatever, and I had asked you to send me whatever you had on that, and I know you?
Did I not?
You did not, so just to make a note, I'm, I'm interested in that.
Okay, I will bring it down and do that, sorry about that.
No, no, it's no problem. It's not a, not a big deal, I just, I was just, a little point of interest, but you can remember to do it, I appreciate it.
This is Cody? No? I just thought of something I probably could've brought it up before, but have you had any talks or information brought to you about the rockets being put up at Granite Loma?
Other than the New Yorker, which I thought was pretty prestigious, um, no. No, I think the article even indicates the general lack of information flowing on that project.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you for the lead-in, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna get this in front of the planning commission, one way or the other. Again, it was brought up in late summer, fall of 2020 by a resident of Eagle Nosfero, Matt Sorrell. And then, because at the time, we thought that this was strictly limited to Powell Township, would not affect any residents of Marquette Township, we just booted it to the board, and then the board made a comment about it at some meeting, and then it was never discussed again. But it's becoming more and more obvious that this is going to include a serious impact on people who live in Marquette Township. And in fact, some, some Marquette Township residents may even be forced to evacuate their homes due to the 7,300-foot exclusion zone that's mandated by federal regulations. So anyway, I, what I, what I really planned on doing is visiting you on Friday, when you, when you don't have anything else to do but sit around in your office.
Fridays are like Mondays for me.
It's probably wordle, you know, but no, whatever time is good for you, I'd like to talk to you about a very politic way of getting this. I mean, I would never do anything without consulting you, Lynn, and Jim, and now Jim has already broached the topic here, so. So I wanted to talk to you about a very politic way of, diplomatic way of advancing this, and so maybe what day is good for you?
Yeah, let me, let me look into that, and I'll respond to your email, I did get it, I just haven't had a chance.
Just send me an email, that's all, let me know, and I'll, I'll, I'll fit your schedule.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for including me in the discussion.
Well, you're essential.
We are all, you're planners, we're planners, we're all planners here.
Yeah. Some of us are real planners, like you, Eric.
Eric's getting there, for sure. I thought he did a great job of the structure rental.
Yes.
Very good. Very good.
Yeah. That's all I had. If no one has anything else, roll turn.
Eight thirty, okay. Thanks, everybody.
Okay.
Hey, Jim, thanks for bringing it up.
I thought you were going to, and then?
Well, I didn't, I'm presumptuous, so.
Come on, Dan.
You're the, you're the president, so I'm glad to be here.